I'd like to call the village board meeting to order for Tuesday, July 23rd. Roll call, please.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Present.
Trustee Paul.
Present.
Trustee Zerbal.
Here.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Here.
Trustee Melczeski.
Here.
President Kardasky.
Here.
Trustee Bukowski is en route.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remember the men and women throughout the world in uniform. Okay, I have no changes to the agenda, so I need a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Action on open and closed minutes from the meeting of June 25th, 2019.
Move to approve.
Motion and a second to approve those minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number six, comments from the public must be limited to items not on the agenda. Is there any public here that would like to talk on items not on the agenda? Since we have no public here that would like to talk to items not on the agenda, we will move on to seven. Written communications and/or announcements. Okay, hearing none. Number eight, action on consent agenda, which is action on July 2019 operators license, department reports for July 2019, budgeted expenditures, and general fund financial report, June year-to-date.
Move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve that consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Number nine, public hearings. Public hearing regarding ordinance number 07-1-19, amending a planned unit development PUD overlay zone district for Bay Park Square. Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this item? Is there anybody here who would like to speak against this? Anybody here who would like to speak against this? Hearing none. Anybody here who would like to speak for this? Anybody here who would like to speak for this? Anybody here who would like to speak for this? Okay.
Move to close the hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second to close the hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 10A, action regarding ordinance 07-1-19, amending a planned unit development PUD overlay zoning district for Bay Park Square. Mr. Aaron, do you like to address that?
The requested PUD amendment is from Simon Properties as owner of Bay Park Square Mall. The requested PUD amendment is to facilitate the redevelopment of the former Yonkers Furniture Gallery store into a Dave and Buster's arcade restaurant sports bar. There are three specific amendments to the recorded PUD document for the Bay Park Square PUD, including the addition of two outlots fronting on O'Naita Street. One outlot will host a Panda Express restaurant. The other outlot will host a two tenant building. At this point, it's tentatively a Blaze Pizza and Mission Barbecue. The other two items for the PUD amendment is the removal of requirement that all dumpster enclosures have hot and cold water and a floor drain. That was actually a surprise to both village staff and Simon Properties folks that that requirement was actually in there. So that's why that was removed. And also a removal of the prohibition on boxer cabinet-type signs to allow for Dave and Buster's standard signage they have for their typical stores. Representatives of both Simon Properties as well as Dave and Buster's are in the audience. I'd be happy to answer any questions, as well, I'm sure they would if you have any questions for them specifically.
Aaron, backing up to what you said, what'd you say about signage?
The requested PUD amendment is to allow for boxer cabinet-type signage. The circular Dave and Buster's logo sign is actually considered a cabinet sign, which at this point is not allowed under the PUD. The requested PUD amendment is to allow that signage. Staff is very comfortable with the cabinet or box-type sign with its insulation.
Okay, all right, now I understand.
Okay, any more questions, discussions?
I'll move to approve action requiring ordinance 07-1-9, amending planned unit development overlay zoning district at the Bay Park Square.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 07-1-19. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. 10B, 2018 audit review.
We should have more discussion on that so these people haven't driven all the way for nothing.
Have a good evening.
Dave Mako from Clifton Larson Allen, formerly Schenk, is here to go over our audit for 2018. In the packet you had included the CAFR and then the independent auditors report. So he's just gonna highlight some of the key points and if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll start with the annual, the comprehensive annual financial report, which is the financial statements of the district for the, of the village for the year ended December 31st, 2018. Just to wanna hit some of the highlights, first thing I wanna point out is on page six of the report, certificate of achievement. So your prior year comprehensive annual financial report did receive the certificate from the Government Finance Officers Association. This report was also submitted and we believe meets the high reporting standard. So it's very positive on the village of able to produce a report that meets the high standards of the Government Finance Officers Association. Then if we turn to page 10 of the comprehensive annual financial report, really it's our independent auditors report, which is really our contribution. Going through this document, it talks about the financial statements that are contained. It talks about our responsibility is to express opinion. And on the bottom of page 10, we've expressed an unmodified opinion. So what that would mean is we'd make no modifications to the report you have in front of you. Then starting on page 12 is management's discussion and analysis. It goes from page 12 to page 23. It's a very comprehensive analysis of the key trends that happened in 2018. So I'd encourage the village board to review it. It's very well done and it really hits all the significant changes. And then starting on page 24 is your fund financials and government-wide financials statements. Nothing significantly different. We have pulled out the key information in our management communications. I just wanna spend, you know, two seconds on the government-wide financial statements, which is really 24, 25, and 26, primarily to hit some of the highlights. Really key point here is under the primary government, which is your general fund, your TIF districts, your water sewer, all your utility operations, you know, broken between government activities and business type. Take a look at your total assets. You're really managing about $164 million of assets on a historical cost basis. Many of those assets are the infrastructure that gets citizens around the community, or the infrastructure that gets you water, sewer services, stormwater, et cetera. So, but a significant amount of assets you're managing. Your net position on the bottom is really about $81 million. So that's the portion that you have financed as of this period of time. So, the rest of the report is good information, goes through all the fund financials, but if we can, unless anyone has any questions, we'll go to the management communications. Any questions on the annual financial?
Did you bust out the referendums on this as well?
Pardon me?
You bust out the referendums out of?
It is bust, yeah, it is recorded in separate funds. It's all combined into one referendum fund. This year, I think it's reported as non-major because the activity is much less than it had been in the past couple of years.
What is it under?
You'd find that on page 89.
Thank you.
Of the report. So what David's saying is you report for the year only. So this particular year in 2018, we really wound up all of the spend. So it's not considered a major fund because it's a lot lower than what it had been, obviously in '15 and '16 when we were spending upwards of 10, 15 million a year roughly in those one or two years. So basically, that is, we've done, spent all the money. It's closed out. So going forward, you really won't see it here anymore because it's closed out. It's now become part of the capital assets that he referenced earlier.
Good.
It's an asset now instead of an expense.
Any other questions? Okay, if we go to the second document, which is our communications and our independent auditors report, if we turn to page one of the report through page four, it's just standard communication. It really talks about how the audit went. It talks about, from a perspective of, from reviewing your internal controls, reviewing your compliance with laws or regulations. We are pleased to indicate that we did not find any deficiencies in internal controls over the village. We also, in our review of the laws and regulations, did not find any non-compliance. So from a perspective, when you're looking at the financial results and our audit, unmodified opinion on your financial statements, a lot of effort goes in by village staff in preparing that. And then when we look at internal controls and compliance, nothing to report to the village board, which indicates that, from our opinion, the internal control structure of the village is well-designed and that you're complying with all the laws and regulations you are required to comply with. There was only one new standard that was implemented, and that related to Gatsby Statement Number 75. So that was implemented as required by your financial reporting standards. The rest of that, page three and four, really say the audit went very well. Now, we work very closely with the finance team here, but we also work with other departments in dealing with the infrastructure, water sewer, various different operations. We also look at department operations and test some of the transactions. So when we come in and do the audit, there's many people within the village that are, we're working with, and everyone was very cooperative in the completion of the audit. Then if we turn to page seven, I just wanna hit highlights of the financial results. Page seven kinda goes through governmental funds, nothing significant. The general fund did have a plan reduction, and so there was a reduction as you transfer money to other funds within the general fund. The other funds, nothing significant or unusual, except for you can see TIF district number four and five have assets related to some bonding that occurred in 2018. And then taking a look at, if we turn to page eight, your general fund, it currently is around 35% of your 2019 budgeted general fund. So we continue to believe the village is well-structured and in an excellent financial position and cash flow as you enter 2019 fiscal year. Then there's a couple of TIF district balances, so we're just reporting the net project costs. So TIF districts have obviously borrowing and project costs that are recovered over time. Then if, you really have a couple of key utility operations. If we turn to page nine, the water utility is operating in a current loss, so we are working with the village to review and structure rates. So we will be reporting back as part of the budget process and part of the rate process of where we think rates should be. So we're working with the village on that. And then page 11 is the sewer utility, still excellent financial cash position in both of the funds, but we're also looking at the sewer utility at the same time, so. And then on page 12 is your health and dental, two self-insurance funds, both have positive years and both are in good financial position as you enter 2018. And then final comment is just on your community development authority. You were able to get the lease revenues paid for all the debt service related to the rest center, so. Any questions on that? So when we step back, you know, we're just, like I said, looking at the water and sewer utilities, but overall, the village continues to be in a strong financial position. You're well-managing your resources that you have and that you're required to manage. So from our perspective, no issues or concerns there. Any questions on that?
I've got one.
Sure.
On the ratio of net general obligation debt to assessed value and general obligation debt per capita, is there any trends there that, that we should consider that might, may have some negative impact or positive impact?
What page is that page? What's the schedule called by chance?
Ratio of net general obligation debt to assessed value and net general obligation debt per capita for previous 10 years.
It's 124.
Okay, got it. You know, I think, you know, from a standpoint, each municipality is different at a point in time. You know, when we look at this value, you know, it's increased a little bit, but that is primarily due to the TIF districts that you have. From our perspective, the values here, you know, are, we have no concerns when we look at this. Every, every community is slightly different based on what has happened. So most of the increase in the debt relates to some TIF district projects that, you know, as long as the TIF districts are successful, will come back from an increment perspective. And the villages have always had a long history of, you know, positive TIF values there. So no concerns from our perspective.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I read, when I first got this in a paper copy from Greg, I read it, and I read it again when I just got it for my, for my packet. And there's still a lot of stuff in here that I don't remember. It's a lot of information, but we do have a great financial team here, so.
You do. And yeah, it's comprehensive for a reason, there's a lot of information there.
Lot of information, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you.
Okay, 10C, action regarding the preliminary plat of Eldon Station parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1. Aaron.
As Mary alluded to, this is the preliminary plat of Alden Station, the former Schneider site on the Fox River. The preliminary plat was submitted, which divides the property up from its current two parcels. I forget the exact number of parcels that are created, but it's upwards of 60 or 70, somewhere around there. Somewhere around 60 or 70. The, the plat itself is provided to, I said divide the lots up, eventually for sale once the final plat comes through in the near future. Recommended conditions of approval for the plat include the following: splitting Outlet Five trail access from the south side of Alden Circle into its own outlot to create a hard boundary between the development and Ashwabanon Creek; obtaining FEMA, WDNR, Village of Ashwabanon approvals prior to filling the floodway and floodplain on the site; change proposed zoning note to R2 and R3 with PUD overlay; change the wetland note indicating Outlet One to Outlet Five; and approval by the Brown County Planning Commission. The staff conditions of approval are rather technical in nature, nothing untoward that would affect approval from staff's perspective.
Aaron, are there any big changes from the ones we've looked at in the past?
No, this is the, the exact same, actually, as the preliminary plats.
This is the one we've been going with.
Right, this is the one that was reviewed by Plan Commission and recommended for approval by them. I would expect when the, well, the final plat comes through, we'll have these conditions of approval addressed on there, such as creating a Outlet Six, where Outlet Five is split for the trail access.
Okay.
The parcel lines may shift a little bit, north or south, but really it should be substantially similar to the preliminary plat.
Okay. Another question, Mark brought it up at our last meeting about the contaminated soil. Are we getting close to having that summarized?
We have received preliminary results from the additional testing that was done through the EPA grant, and those raw data at this point. We are hosting a meeting next week with Stantec, where they will synthesize the results of the sampling and give us basically an English version of all the numbers that were set forth.
Okay. So we don't have any final data on that yet?
Not final yet. We should have a good indication of that next week.
Okay, all right, very good.
So it's nothing that's gonna hold the project down?
Do we need approval on this?
Yes, sir.
All right, I'll move to approve the preliminary plat map for Alden Station parcels VA-162 and VA-174-1.
With staff conditions?
With all the exceptions of, of the staff.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the preliminary plat of Eldon Station with listed conditions of approval. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 10D, action to amend license premise description Title Town Sports Service, Inc., DBA Title Town. Patrick.
Title Town Sports Service presently manages the three entities within Aaron's Hill. They'll also be managing the Top Golf Operations, which is in the first floor of Title Town Tech, which is contiguous to the present license premise of Aaron's Hill. Thus the request. Everything's in order per state statute, chapter 125. I urge approval.
Patrick, if more stores of liquor, bar, pubs come forward, are they gonna be added to this?
Well, this license is the PEDD, which there were, when the legislation a couple of years ago, there's two of these types of licenses within that district. There's one remaining. I don't know if that's answering your question?
No. If there's another, if there's another restaurant-bar type there that's in one of the other buildings, is that gonna take a different liquor license now?
If it's a different entity, a different LLC.
So they can occupy two different buildings, Aaron's Hill and Title Town?
Title Town's Sports Service, because they're contiguous, yes.
That's what you're asking?
But, okay, but like you said, Mark, if another one comes in, another company comes in, they will need their own liquor license?
Correct. If it's a company ABC, it's $30,000 for that license.
Okay, all right, now, now I understand. Okay.
But there's only gonna be one more available?
Correct, per statute.
But there's?
For premier economic development district.
But there's other licenses that we, if there's?
For our regular, yes, there's one remaining. That just opened up a couple of weeks ago.
But other ones we can purchase from other municipalities if we?
I've already approached a couple municipalities, they're holding on to them at this time, depending upon their growth. But to your point, trustee Williams, yes, that's another option, another option to garner regular combination, Class B beer, Class B liquor, if you will, it's getting an exception to the quota by going to, say, a hotel that follows the criteria for the exception to the quota. So there's other avenues.
If, if one of these communities will leave one of their, or several licenses go, is that something we have to buy from them?
Will be a pass-through, will, will wind up being a pass-through for whoever that developer is. By law, to, to purchase one, it's $10,000. So whoever wants one, they'd have to pay for that.
That'll be their cost.
Correct.
Okay, all right, okay.
Unless you wanna, unless you wanna pay for it yourself?
No, 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 that's not what I was referring to. All right, no other questions? Let's move to approve the Title Town Sports Service LLC license.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to amend the license premise description for Title Town Sports Service, Inc., DBA Title Town. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. 10E, review and award of the building and structure demolition contract for the village of Ashwabanon, former South Broadway Schneider Trucking Site. Mr. Martin.
Good evening, everybody. What this is in regards to, you just discussed with Aaron, the preliminary plat for Alden Stations. This is some of the contract work that'll be happening out on site. So since early this year, there's been the site survey, the start of some of the design work, some of the environmental sampling that's been done. The design to this point is about 75%. I think two months back, we had the contracts that came through for the asbestos survey and abatement on, on the buildings, so that all the asbestos has been taken care of above ground. So that's complete. We're now at the point where we can take the existing structures that are on-site down to grade level. So all the buildings that are on-site would be torn down and demolished as part of this contract. From there, all the rest of the work would be bid out as a site and utility and roadway contract, which will take into account what we just discussed with Aaron, in terms of once we know all the environmental sampling that's done, then we can put together the contract for all the work from the ground level down. So that's how this all kinda fits into the puzzle of this project. So what's before you tonight is the summary of bids and the bid award recommendation for the demolition of all those structures on the Alden Station site, the former Schneider Trucking site. We had six pre-qualified bidders. We had bids ranging from about $148,500 up to over $464,000. We did put in here an alternate bid, and what we were hoping to do was, we were looking to see if we could get all of the buildings that were concrete crushed, so that would reduce our bid number and provide us gravel for use during the project. And what we needed was about a, in order to make it worth our while, we needed about a $25,000 to $30,000 separation, if you will. As the contractor started nosing around on-site, they found that some of the slabs had insulation blown into the center cores of them. So when you send that through a grinder, it starts looking like a snow globe. It starts sending all those pieces up into the air and causes, as you can imagine, some issues with the DNR in terms of airborne, maybe not asbestos, but airborne insulation. That's reflected in, in the alternate bids. Everybody's alternate bids were pretty close to one another. The one I'm going to caution you on was the one for Corporate Contractors Incorporated. They misinterpreted what the alternate bid meant. That was going to be their deduct. Their alternate, once you subtracted it off correctly, was still higher than our lowest bid, which was from Robinson Brothers for $148,500. That's our recommendation for you tonight for approval. And this would, work would start in August, and they'll be towards the middle to end of September, the bid award for the road and utility construction, which would follow behind this project. Does it all kinda make sense? I wanted to start kinda from the beginning up to this point as to how it's, how it's going to unfold.
Doug, how can the bids be so far apart? $148,000 down to $450,000?
In talking to?
The ones lower are looking for work, and the ones that are bigger, if we get it, will?
We, we actually benefited from the Expo Center project going on. There were a number of contractors up here looking to do work, and they had bid on the Expo Center project, and there were still a couple that had open slots open for this, for this summer. So we started asking around once we saw where the bids were, and that was, we had two of them that were pretty full-up, but if they could break away and make some good money and, and get their bid for $300,000 or $400,000, it was gonna be gravy on top of the potatoes, if you will. We had a couple others that were looking for work and gave us good numbers.
Okay. You're comfortable with Robinson Brothers out of Wanakee?
Yes. We haven't worked with them in the past, but McMahon, our consultant that assisted us on the project, has worked with them on a couple of projects in the valley and has had very good luck.
All right, they're gonna do crushing on-site with the, the structures?
We won't be doing any crushing. Everything will get sent to the landfill because of the insulation that was blown into the core of a lot of the concrete. core of a lot of the concrete walls and floors. The cost savings wasn't there to do so because of that insulation being within the concrete.
Okay. The only reason I ask that question, because wouldn't that be great, Phil, for the property? If, if, if?
If it was straight, if it was straight concrete?
Yeah.
It would have been great, and I think we would have seen our bids, our alternate bid would be even lower. But because it had the insulation blown into it, that's what's causing the numbers to be real close to one another.
You're telling me walls, ceilings, and floors were all insulated?
About, from what we're getting back from the contractors, about 60% of it was.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. That's kind of unusual. Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve Robinson Brothers Environmental for the amount of $148,500,000.
Second, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid of, from Robinson Brothers Environmental, Inc., for the amount of $148,500. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10F, action on paging provider change. Chief Rowling?
Good evening. First time here, so excuse me if I make any mistakes. I'm sure you'll let me know. That's what I've been told at this table. But we'd like to, only one? I've been told you only have a minute, too, to talk. But we'd like to propose a change with the way we're paging in our officers. Currently, we have, most of you are probably very familiar with the old-style pagers. The company that we have, if you look at your sheet, charges us $3,200 a year just for that service. The problem is that if these pagers drop, break, quit working, we have to turn them back in at the cost of $50 a pager. And that continues to then to add to what we're budgeting each year for our officers to be called in on an emergency, which is the reason for these pagers. A new system we have out there, 1033. What this system does is it actually takes web-based texting to each officer's phone, which of course, everybody carries a cellphone. The pagers, not so much. Sometimes you go out, you forget to pager, but you never forget your phone. So with this, we're looking at a cost savings of, for this year especially, $940 if we implement, and for the next three years, we're looking up to approximately $6,500. And that's just for the service that we have. That's not including the batteries that we supply for the officers, as well as, we're roughly looking at about $200 a year extra to replace pagers. Again, a system that's kind of falling dinosaur at the wayside. So our recommendation is to continue and move forward with this new system.
Tom, I didn't know they had pagers yet.
Yeah, me too.
What happened to this?
They do. And with that, that's why we said, we've got a system here that we're paying, we think, way too much money for when everyone has their cellphones. And we also think, like I said, it'll be timely. You're out for dinner and your pager goes off, it may be at home instead of, hey, it's your phone. You may be able to come in and assist the department. So we're looking at a system that's going to even help, you know, our village with response time from our public safety officers.
Is this just for the officers, or does this include paid-on-call, like firefighters and stuff like that?
No. So those are different pagers. Those are actually, those are still in effect, and they have them. There's also another system that's out there for them as well. It's, excuse me, it's slipped my mind right now, but there's a couple different systems that they have. But the one that's out there for the POCs, their pagers are a little bit more heavy-duty, a little bit more advanced. But the other system that they have is that there's a delay in there. So depending on where you are, you may not get that notification four, five, 10 minutes out. But their pagers that they have, I mean, they're up to date, but too expensive to try to supply for all of our public safety officers.
Chief, how long has this technology or this specific program been available?
For many years. In fact, Kiwanee County has had this 1033 system for several years. In fact, right now, there's actually an update, even just being implemented for this. So we're going to get the latest and greatest. And they had zero issues with it, from what we've also been told. And that's, again, think of Kiwanee County, where you're on the, you know, outstretched area, it's not great service, so.
So it's something we're just finding out about now, or just something that we haven't explored?
We've actually, this was actually brought up with our former chief. There's just some things that were in a delay that we've been able to iron out and move forward with. So we'd like to bring it forward and say, hey, let's take a look at this.
Yeah, because this seems like a no-brainer. I mean...
Correct.
Financially and otherwise.
We agree.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll move to approve the, oh, where am I here? Just lost my...
American Messaging 1033.
Just lost my page.
From American Messaging to 1033.
33 system.
The, what is it?
It's a 1033 innovations system.
Okay. I'll move to approve the 1033 innovation system for the public safety.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the changing to 1033 innovations. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you, chief. Okay. 10G, Smith Park pathway extension bid recommendation. Mr. Rex?
All right. I will actually talk about this one. We are looking to extend the current pathway over at Smith Park. Currently, it starts over at Shady Lane, and it goes past the park shelter, ending at the playground. This is a budgeted item. It is part of our ADA accessibility plan and has also been part of our court plan. So what we are looking to do is actually extend that pathway around the playground and then take that pathway all the way over to the view lane cul-de-sac. That would be the base bid for this project. And then we have alternate one, which will go from the playground over to the tennis courts, and will actually go up to the concrete slab that the porta-potties are located on. And then the alternate two is actually going to go off of the current pathway, replacing the crusher dust path that goes to the drinking fountain. So we did receive two bids from this project here. We got one from Quinn &amp; Sons that came in at $20,160. That was the low bid out of the two. The other came from Express Excavating. Park Board actually recommended approval and sending this to Village Board last week. It was budgeted at $19,000. The total for the three paths actually came in at $20,160. If we just did the first two, the base bid and the alternate one going to the porta-potties, it would come in slightly under budget at $18,540. But we think that adding the concrete path to the drinking fountain will make a world of difference. Currently, we're having a lot of issues with children at the park taking the crusher dust and jamming it into the drinking fountain. So our park maintenance guys are actually going there at least weekly, if not daily some weeks, to unclog that. So the additional $1,160 that would cover the overage for that third pathway, we would actually be able to cover that from our park maintenance budget. So we are looking for acceptance of the bid from Quinn &amp; Sons for the full $20,160, except for the base bid, the alternate one, and the alternate two. And then just one thing to note, when we did receive the bids, there was a misunderstanding from Quinn &amp; Son when it came to the 5% bid security. They based their 5% actually off the alternate two when it should have come off the base price for the project. So when we notified them, they did bring in a new check right away for the 5%, based off the base bid and not the alternate two. So that issue was corrected immediately.
Okay. Any questions?
Yeah, reading this over prior to the meeting. The fountain filled with crushed dust that needed to be arched surface to eliminate constant service or maintenance. You're telling me kids like the, the little darlings like to put stones in there to wash them?
I think it's their favorite amenity at the park.
And order to play with them, or what's the issue here?
Yeah, that's, it's kind of funny, the things that kids will do at some of these parks. We, like I said, they're constantly unplugging that. Another one of their favorite pastimes is taking wood chips or sap from trees and putting it into the park shed locks. So anything that they can jam stuff into, it seems like they're a fan of that.
You do have equipment there to play with, don't you?
We do, but apparently they're more interested in the drinking fountain.
All right. All right. I'll move to approve your project with Quinn &amp; Son Concrete LLC for the Smith Park.
For the $20,160?
For the $20,160.
Okay.
I'll second it.
And then your rest of the money coming out of your maintenance one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve the bid from Quinn &amp; Son Concrete for $20,160. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. 10H, renaming of Lois Aubinger Park. Well, Rex and I have had a few phone calls on this today. I know that this was approved at Park Board last week, the renaming of the park to either Aubinger Park or Aubinger Family Park. Rex reached out to Annette Aubinger, and she did send an email that she would really prefer that the park remain Lois Aubinger Park. She felt that Lois did a lot for our community. She was very instrumental in the Park and Rec Department many years ago, and she just felt that the park should remain honoring Lois Aubinger. So I'm just stating that, and I don't think that she would like to rename the park. So your thoughts on that, Rex?
Well, both individuals obviously are well-known in the community and have done a world of good for Ashwabanen and helped it out. So both are worthy. I think in situations like this, you know, when the spouse feels strongly in one particular way, I'm fine keeping it as Lois Aubinger Park. I know, Gary, you're the one that originally brought it up. You know, Park and Rec Department, like I said, I think I can speak for our group. We're fine whatever way we go with this because Lois is worthy, Mike is worthy, but if Annette feels that Lois should be the one recognized, you know, as was originally planned, then we're fine with that, too. But I'll defer to any thoughts that you may have.
All right. This came up, my wife, Bonnie, maintains the beauty of the park, flowers, and always suggesting to Rex on what to do with it. Through that, we discussed naming it Aubinger Park. And then there was a comment about Aubinger Family Park. And I believe the family park would be the correct way of doing it because the Aubingers have done a lot in this community, past and present, including their spouses that were with them. Lois Aubinger herself is somebody that, if you're not an elder, an older person of the community, you realize who she is and what she's done. The younger community that we're working with, they probably don't know her, but they all knew Mike. So that's where our idea of the Aubinger Family Park includes the Aubingers and their spouses, whoever they may be, and some of those people are still involved, meaning spouses, with the community. So my recommendation is to call it the Aubinger Family Park to recognize everybody who's contributed to the community, that everybody knows about either Lois as the senior citizens or the younger people that all knew Mike and his spouse. So that's how I feel about it.
When we talked about this at Park Board, whichever way we go is fine. I mean, I'm not, it's not, I don't want to make this a contentious issue or, you know, issue that is going to divide everybody because Lois did her part, is starting the park department and the park system, you know, for Ashwabanen, doing a lot that way. Mike has a street named after him on Ridge Road as well. So I mean, they've both been recognized by the community already. I don't have a problem either way, to be very honest with you, because they're, but they're both being recognized as well. So I mean, I'm torn on how to do this or what to do for them, and when Annette says that it should stay Lois, it's like, well, I don't want to disrupt, you know, her feelings on what's going on as well. I think everybody knows that the Aubingers have done their share in the community regardless. And they're both being recognized already. So I mean, I don't know, I don't know the right way to do this, to be very honest with you.
Well, I can hear what you're saying, but, you know, what do we got? A block and a half called Mike Aubinger Way? And you asked some of the people around here, well, where is that? It's not like Hogrom Way, Mike McCarthy Way. It's just a short street. So you're right, we did do something for Mike. So, and Lois is the other part of the park. I just happened to run into Ted Pamperon myself through his stay here, and I hope Mike, he's doing well with the operation or the procedure that he had meeting Ted Pamperon. But Ted had no problem in the change with that. So I know he brought that up. I was around at that time as a citizen of the village, and that was his wishes to rename that park. So, you know, I think we've all kind of kicked this around, and we got to come to some conclusion. And I guess I'll listen to anything else before a motion is made.
Well...
At the Park Board, I'm sorry, Mary.
No, go ahead.
I voted for it basically just to get it to the Village Board, you know, and let us discuss or have further discussion on it. And like you, Mark, and I've got no problem with it either, but like you, Mark, you know, once you bring Annette into the mix, that pulls a little bit of weight. Mary, you mentioned before you had received some phone calls. Did you get a sense of where people are with this?
Well, I don't think anybody has a problem renaming it, and I don't have a problem renaming it if we would choose to. However, when Annette, and that's her family, is the one that states that she feels that it should stay Lois Aubinger Park, I will have to support Annette in that decision. So I wouldn't want to, she is the Aubinger that is left, and I wouldn't want to go against what her wishes were. So that's my comment.
I can say, I don't have a problem either way, but I think that Annette should have a say in it, being that she is standing in her right way. Not that it's a bad idea, Gary, don't get me wrong.
No, no, no.
I totally understand.
Right. Right. I don't, like I said, I don't have a problem doing it, but without Annette's support, I feel, I would feel very uncomfortable doing it.
All right. I'm going to make a motion. I'm going to make a motion to rename the park, Aubinger Family Park, to include everybody and their spouses in this vote, or in the vote that I'm making. and their spouses in this vote, or in the vote that I'm making.
Is there a second? Okay, there's not a second, so the motion dies.
Good idea, Gary. I just think that we got to take the families' wishes.
Okay, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
Is there any value in, I don't know if value is the right word, but revisiting this and maybe getting some input from the community? Or is it something we should just move on?
I personally would not put the community thoughts above Annette's. That's my own personal opinion. Annette is the one.
I have to agree with that.
Annette's the one Aubinger that is left, and I have to respect her wishes. So.
Thanks, Gary.
Yep. It was a great idea. I thought, when it first came about, I thought it was a great idea by Gary and Bonnie. Okay, 10I, 2020 budget timeline. Mr. Gray.
This is just the timeline, very similar to what we had last year for the budget. I know no one wants to talk about 2020 yet, but it's around the corner. Starting with a kickoff meeting the department has on August 22nd, all the way to our formal adoption on November 26th. The key date for you all would be getting the budget books on November 1st, and then having our joint review, joint Village Board Finance Personnel Committee meeting on November 12th. And if we recall, last year, we bumped it back deeper into the year for two reasons. One, primarily, is the state doesn't provide some of the information that we need to finalize the budget, including the final assessment ratios and some of the other key factors there. And two, it just allows staff to get through the summer and finalize their summers before they've got to really start pounding through the budget. Gives us another whole month, so. If there's no objections, this would be the timeline. The date to be, the time to be determined on the 12th, we do have Fire, Police and Fire Commission meeting that evening, but we're prepared to adjust the timing, whether we start this budget meeting at 5:30 or 6:00 or something like that, but that'll come at a later date.
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget timeline as proposed.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the budget timeline as proposed. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, 10J, request to approve resolution R.7-1-19, creating and delegating authority to Board of Public Works. Tony.
All right, this is a proposed resolution that is consistent with state statute, essentially and even as Director Martin had touched upon earlier when discussing the award with respect to the demo contract at the Schneider site. We routinely go through and administer public works contracts, the entire bidding process. And sometimes what may come up, a discussion after the award of contracts, is there may be situations that result in maybe change orders, or there may be an emergency that may come up. For example, as Director Martin indicated, there may be like, thankfully, we didn't have an issue with asbestos at the Schneider site, but that may be a potential that would then create a public health, safety, welfare, kind of a public emergency. And state law does allow cities and villages to create a Board of Public Works to act in situations that may constitute a public emergency. And really, what it allows for is more quick action, as opposed to going through the public bidding process and convening a special village board meeting and things of that nature. So what the proposed resolution is, is essentially the board creating this administrative Board of Public Works, which under state law would consist of the village's engineer, comptroller, finance director, and village attorney, that they would then act in those sorts of situations. And really, this is just a formal resolution that would create and then delegate that authority from the board to the Board of Public Works to act in those sorts of limited situations.
So that doesn't, which is different than what all of our other boards are, has public representation on it.
That's correct.
The point of this is that if you have a pipe burst or something, you can't go bid it out and bring it back to the board. And so we're really just trying to clean up the authority to do so, because the state law requires it kind of go to this, that this authority essentially be delegated either internally or have this administrative board, if you will. So we're just trying to create that paper trail, because we were not able to find it. And when we do have something that is, you have to go fix it right now and not do a formal bidding process, we don't really have the documented paperwork to back it up. It's not meant to circumvent bidding laws in any way, where it's a practical sense of, we are going to construct a road, and this happened, it's more, a pipe broke, something happened, something, emergency happened, and we need to adapt and change to that and fix it now, and not wait till we, you know, post a meeting, take bids, and three days later, you know, we might stop the flooding.
So what do we do now?
Well, that's just what I was going to say, Mark.
Right now, we do it.
Because all you're doing is creating a board, because when you have a, in an emergency, naturally, the engineer would be involved, financial, you're going to figure out how to pay for it, and between the President, you, Allison, and Tony, you're going to get this thing done.
We are going to get it done, but right now, we don't have the paper trail that says you told us to go do that.
Right.
So we're just trying to clean that up and make sure everybody's on the same page, that we're going to go clean up the mess.
Okay.
And you don't worry, but we need a paper trail to show that. Yeah.
All right. Simple.
I was going to use those.
Move your pro.
Hold a second.
Give them the power.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve resolution R.7-1-19, creating and delegating authority to Board of Public Works. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Number 11, items for next agenda, if there are any items.
I just wanted to mention the Ashwabanon blast, I was going to do it at the beginning, and I forgot all about it, August 10th, Ashwabanon.
Yep.
Come on.
Card show starts at nine.
Still looking for volunteers, if anybody's interested, they can, call me is probably a good thing, or call Mark, but there is a link to sign up and volunteer, we can get that out to anybody who may be listening or interested that's in this room.
Okay.
It's the best two hours of your life you'll ever have with.
Six hours. Come on, you got to start tonight.
Mark, I heard you were here a lot more than six hours.
Yeah, it is.
And Allison.
Probably 15 hours. And Rex.
Rex, yes.
Number 12.
During the meeting, the Village Board of the Village of Ashwabanon may convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851E for the purpose of possible discussion and action on deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business regarding the development of parcel VA-162 and VA-174-1 related to tax incremental district number three, where competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. The Village Board may thereafter reconvene and open session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.852 to report the results of the closed session and consider the balance of the agenda.
Make a motion to go to closed session.
Second. Motion and a second to go into closed session.
Trustee Allison Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Paul.
Yes.
Trustee Zerbal.
Yes.
Trustee Mark Williams.
Yes.
Trustee Malchesky.
Yes.
President Kardowski.
Yes.
We are in closed session.